All right. I'm going to call to order this Kerrville City Council workshop for October 28th, 2025. I understand we have some people signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. Gabriel Peralas?
Mr. Peralas, come on up.
Gabriel.
Hi, Council Mayor. Again, pleasure to be here speaking to you all and just really briefly wanted to provide a quick update on where we're at and I think some new and hopefully important information for those who are not fully aware of it. But first things first, just to start by saying that the September 28 deadline for physical damage has been adjusted or modified by SBA. We are offering a 60-day grace period, which is now taking us to November 27th for any person homeowner, renter, or business and nonprofit to apply for physical damage resources. And we still have our staff here now, even though the disaster recovery centers did close. We do have the business recovery center still here at the First Presbyterian Church, and we're up in the second floor, second floor at the library. So that is great news that we will have an additional amount of time to be here and trying to be as helpful as we can with our resources. So that was the first thing. The second thing is that there is now a secondary declaration, that is a rural declaration, in some of the contiguous counties in which we were offering idle. And it doesn't necessarily pertain to Kerr County or Carroll, but again, through the networks, through the folks that you may know. So we now have Concho, Coke, Sutton, Mason, and Kendall County. Those five counties have now become primary counties of the rural declaration. Therefore, where they were only eligible for idle resources only, they're now also available for full physical damage resources as well. So again, whether it's homeowner or business, they can now qualify for the full gamut of products that we do offer. So again, we just wanted to share that, number one. Number two, again, hope that we can continue to get approval from Council and yourself to get this updated information on the website. If it's not there, maybe send out a newsletter, however you all deem the best way to get this communication out. So that's the latest update. We'll continue to offer some updates on what's transpiring and as deadlines come and go as well. And then lastly, I'll leave you with the numbers that I got this morning, which were were now slightly over 2,200 applications and have offered over $30 million. Again, this is the whole declaration, not just necessarily Kerrville or Kerr County. But I did want to share that with you since I did have that cross my desk this morning as well.
What was the, what were those numbers you need, Gabriel? Sorry.
It's over 2,200 applications and over 30 million offered.
Thank you, sir.
Of course. So if there's no questions, I also, you know what, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you so much for allowing us to be at the Water Street Festival. It was amazing and fantastic. We're glad to be there. And as I just shared with Kelly, we did have multiple individuals, multiple businesses that did come to the table and get some information or have conversations with us. And for us, you know, if it's one person, five people, 10 people that we can help, we're all for it. And so I just want to say, one, it was a wonderful event. Two, thank you so much for being so gracious and having us there as well.
Good to see you there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good thanks. Welcome back from California.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And don't you have somebody that we need to meet?
I do, sure. Absolutely. You know what? Thank you so much for pointing that out. So coming back from California, I've also been tasked. So Yvette Cruz, who was our previous team lead in Texas, is now heading somewhere. She may or may not come back. But for now, I will be the team lead, and now I'm tasked with training additional staff. And one of them is right here. Let me introduce Tana Morehead. She is week one, day two on the job. So, you know, she'll be handling some of our rural counties as soon as I get her up to speed and she feels comfortable in doing what I'm doing, which is just standing before you all. We'll go ahead and assign her to to one of the rural counties that just got declared as well. But thank you for asking, and Tana?
Thank you for your help.
Quick question. Were you able to get into the event that's happening Saturday? The Market Day swap meeting?
I still have that number that you provided me. I did not reach out to her. We were trying to, I have more than one person that I have to get trained this week. So I was really working on calendars and scheduling. But I have that in mind. We also have, we just talked about the event, the Business Expo as well. So I'm really going to try to coordinate and see if we can get get into both.
Okay.
I have it on my, on my phone. You'll still give them a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Who's next, Shelley?
Larry Howard.
Mr. Howard. Good to see you.
Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills Lane. There's Adam on your consent agenda for the workshop and also on your city council agenda, Adam 4C, at the six o'clock meeting on the exterior enhancement grant program. I'm 100% in favor of this grant. I just want to make sure the language that in the TERS one to include commercial, retail, and all other properties open to the public. So does that include all the properties within the TERS that it's collecting taxes on? Would a short-term rental be considered a commercial business? I'd just like the clarification of that, so.
I would believe a short-term rental is open to the public.
Okay. So for all the, all the taxpayers' properties in the TERS should be allowed to apply for this grant program, if that would be correct?
We will ask the attorney when he, when he comes back.
Thank you. I'd be very much in favor of it if it does. Thank you very much.
Who else, Shelley?
Lang Guerrero.
Mr. Guerrero. Well, on a workshop, we all speak at the beginning, so.
Lang Guerrero, I'm 307 Lakewood Drive. I'm just coming here to give an update on the Guadalupe River Center and then also just answer any questions if you have anything. So we've been quiet lately, intentionally. You know, after the flood, it changed for us quite a bit. We felt like we wanted to focus more on healing, and we've been focusing on community efforts for that. Our fundraising for general purposes, just in the community, has sort of switched from local to foundation-only. And the foundations that we've been working with are not really in the city at all. Judy and I were fortunate enough last week to go to Austin to visit with a particular family and foundation. We had a very successful meeting with them. Can't really say a lot about who they are, but they agreed to help us go ahead and get this shovel on the ground and get the thing built. So we had a follow-up meeting last week, at the end of the week, to go over the cost. It looks like it's going to be about a $4 million building. No problem with that. We talked about different options on how it would be funded, as far as timing and things like that. No problem with that. And so we're just waiting for their board to go ahead and vote for the approval. So that's kind of the update on the River Center. I also want to bring up that we do, last year, we signed an MOU with the city. And part of that MOU was us to support the city to get grants and things like that. So we're going to continue to focus that effort and try to work as closely as we can with the city manager and assistant city manager to continue those, those efforts. We provided some information regarding that as it relates to the boat ramp, also boating access that we feel like we can still get. And then we also provided a roadmap today for the whole city for the rest of the larger amount. We don't have a $2 million problem. We have a $20 million problem. So we provided legislative pathways for that. Texas Parks and Wildlife, TaxDOT, all the different recommendations that our grant writer provided to us to give to the city.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's go right into 2A. Ms. Hagemeier.
Hello. Good afternoon, Council. I'm excited to come to you with the opportunity to invest in businesses through an exterior enhancement grant program. For some background, the City of Kerrville designated the tax increment reinvestment zone, TERS number one, to make recommendations to the council considering administration, management, and operations. So TERS one has recommended the development and funding of an exterior enhancement grant program designed to encourage visual improvements and enhancements to publicly visible areas of commercial, professional, and retail properties within its respective boundaries. So as you go through, whether it's what is on your screen or the handout, we're going to go through the purpose, overview, funding, and eligibility for these grants. So first, we have the purpose, which is to improve and enhance business face signage, landscaping, parking lots, and any other publicly visible areas for commercial, professional, and retail spaces. The overview is the program affects only business exteriors, and it's an effort to improve curb appeal. The funding would be, TERS number one, allocating approved, I don't know why it said three. The, it's supposed to say "the" allocation, not that "the" allocation of $50,000 for the fiscal year '26. And businesses would be eligible for a matching reimbursement grant up to $5,000. And eligibility is either the property owner or the business owner or tenant is able to apply for funding. So this is the TERS map. And so we're looking at that creek right past Francisco Lemus going up to McFarland, then it kind of drops down to Barnett, then it kind of circles up and around through the Earl Garrett area, and then comes back down and then swoops around Broadway and kind of comes down to where Memorial Park is using Water Street as that southern boundary.
Where's Francisco Lemus?
Francisco Lemus is going, I don't think this thing has a pointer.
Or the top of the map.
Yeah, it's towards the, oh, can I do that? Thank you, sir.
There we go.
Okay. So this road right here, because that's the bridge for Francisco Lemus.
Okay.
So that, this right here is Riverside Nature Center, and then so this is like the creek right behind us.
Okay.
So the program criteria, applicants will be reviewed by a grant committee, which will evaluate each project against the assessment standards. And over here are the standards of which they will be judged. And projects must be ready to begin within 90 days of approval.
Can I ask a question about this one? What does that mean? Those projects with the highest weighted average?
So what the selection committee will do is we will rank them. So for instance, professional quality can be up to 10 points, consistency of design 20, and so forth. And so we would rank them as we look at all of the projects and then see which ones received the highest total.
Do you have your committee selected already?
We, we have. I've reached out to a few people, Leslie Jones with the CVB to get an outside perspective, kind of what they hear from visitors and stuff like that. And then two people from the TERS. So Andrew, Andrew Gay and Crystal Smith, because both of them sit on the TERS, but they do not have a business or a direct interest in the TERS. And then myself.
Okay.
And then we will have one person from Development Services sitting in on the meetings just so that they can make sure that whatever applications that we are taking into consideration, that they are in compliance with the codes. So moving on to how the reimbursement process will work. Upon the approval, the applicant will need to obtain a permit. If it's required, not everything that is within the scope would need, would require a permit. And once the project is completed, the applicant will submit a final documentation of the completed work, including proof of payment. And this proof of payment, that is already something that the finance department works with with other programs for reimbursement. Qualifying projects would include painting, cleaning, tuck pointing, facade and window replier or replacement, doorways, lighting, signage, window tinting, awning repair, permanent landscaping, parking lot improvements, and dumpster enclosures. An eligible project would be any project that has already begun work, is already completed, or has a current valid permit. So permits automatically expire, I believe it is 180 days. If no work has begun, then that permit would expire. So just because maybe a business had pulled a permit at some point in time, but maybe for whatever reason, they never went forward with the project, if that, if that permit has expired, we feel that it would be, it would be admissible to let them reapply because maybe this would help them with the funding that they weren't able to find in the first place.
Do sidewalks fall into this?
Sidewalks? We have not specifically put in to this type of grant, just because we were thinking more of facades, understanding that we can look into the potential of under, other funding options for sidewalks.
So before we, they would, you know, get to the reimbursement portion of this project, they would have already been like approved, and everything that's been done was pre-approved. And I guess, you know, most projects I've been exposed to, there's always something that changes a little bit, either beginning, middle, or end of it. So how will you handle, I guess you'll just handle it on a case-by-case basis?
Well, handle it by a case-by-case basis. But how we were expecting for it to work is that we would, being, being a matching grant, we wouldn't, we would not go over 50% of whatever is in that, that work estimate. And then obvi, and then obviously, so they could go do up to $10,000 project and get that $5,000 max. But if it's a $3,000 project, we would only do 15, 1,500.
Great.
Okay. The application process, there will be an online application that will take the applicant to submitting this following information. Their contact information, the property owner, knowing that it might be someone else who owns the property, where the project is located, photos of the existing structure area for improvement, and then a description, outline, illustration, or sketch of what they are proposing, and then the itemized written work estimates. So in the regular meeting today, you'll be voting on the policy and grant agreement and approval for TERS number one to fund the program at $50,000. The policy that you'll be looking at explains how this program promotes, is a promotion and retention of high-quality development in the city with continuous improvements to the quality of life for our citizens, an effort to improve curb appeal and promote economic vitality within TERS number one. Grant funding is pursuant to the program on a case-by-case basis, up to $5,000. And each applicant approved for funding will agree to all terms pursuant of the program. And then the program requirements, again, which will be stated in the agreement, must be located within TERS number one, must be exterior, public-facing, provide proof of property ownership or approval by property owner. The construction must begin within 90 days of being approved and must be completed within one year. Applications must be submitted on time, and awards will not be funded to any project that has already begun, has been completed, or has a valid permit open. And so going towards Mr. Howard's questions, the TERS did make recommendations from the first time that I brought this policy to them. And one of those recommendations was to not include short-term rentals due to some discussions that had happened before with council and short-term rentals. They were not included as a business because of the way that you can't just walk in, you have to pay for it to have access to that property. So if y'all have more questions about that, I'm sure Mike Hayes would be, be able to explain that further. And then, but then they also wanted to change required use. So at first, it was that the, the property couldn't change hands or business for 12 months. But what they felt, as they have looked at some of the properties in the TERS, is a lot of them, they probably need the upgrade in order to get a tenant in there or to be able to sell it for better, higher use, whatever that, so they did ask that if the op, if the, if someone who receives this grant, if they are able to occupy their business for the, or if they're able to get the funds to increase, bolster, or convert the improvement into a marketability property. We wanted to allow that also. Questions?
When will the application itself? Is it already on our website, or the application itself?
No, I can send it, I, Charvie and I have it behind the scenes. We haven't made it live yet, but it just walks, it's a, it's a Google Forms.
Is it like one page?
It just walks people through, it's about 16 questions, and then they're able to submit their documents through that. Or once they submit, it reminds them the list of everything, and then I will follow up with anyone who didn't submit any types of documentation that's needed.
Look forward to seeing it.
Applications, I'm hoping to open those early in November. Ideally, the application deadline would be January 16th. We like to give about 60 days for applicants to apply. Grant, grants would be, grantees would be notified in early to mid-February, and then our request today is for TERS to be allowed to allocate funding up to $50,000. Here are some pictures of other cities that have done an exterior enhancement grant and things that they were able to do, whether it was painting, you know, a new awning, or, or just have new doors. Any other questions?
Just want to make sure I'm following along.
Yes, sir.
The TERS board discussed in particular short-term rentals.
Yes.
And determined that they were not public-facing.
Correct, yes. It was, it was, it was a question that came up. Council was there, Mike Hayes was there, Michael Hornis, and there was a discussion about the decision had been made, I'm assuming whenever short-term rentals, here we go, Michael Hornis can better explain, probably. It was before my time.
Well, so part of the discussion, I think, it might even be, I think I might have brought it up, but as we were discussing short-term rentals and the short-term rental committee back, way back when, some of you were on at that point, there was a very clear distinction that a short-term rental is not a business. Now, remember that conversation? It was a very adamant, adamant description that short-term rentals defined by the state of Texas are not a business, not a commercial enterprise. And that was, we were getting wrapped around the axle from a zoning standpoint about, is it a commercial, is it a residential? And ultimately, it was, it was the determination that it's, no, it's a residential piece of property, right? Which is real strange, because Larry's not wrong. It serves a commercial purpose, right? And, and so, you know, I think there's, there's, there's probably some latitude in there for y'all, but that was kind of, it, you know, this is meant for commercial buildings, right? This is meant for kind of updating those publicly facing, you're going in, you're walking in as a customer, the public in general is going into it. So, you know, government buildings like us or private rentals that don't allow the public in, I think that was the intent behind the TERS, was to keep it, to keep this program for those avenues where it's publicly available for you to go into the, to the space.
You know, Mayor, Council, something that I would, I would add on to that, and maybe not add on, but, you know, caveat it, like anything we do is not set in style, you know? And this is, you know, has been a discussion, I think, for at least two years. I remember us talking about this, you know, very early on in 2024. You know, we're finally trying to get something across the finish line. And I think this is just really great opportunity to try something new. I know at one point, I remember somebody talking about, you know, well, we tried to do something like this 15 years ago and it didn't work, why are we trying to do it now? And I think the point is, is let's get this across the finish line. Let's, let's give this an opportunity to succeed, and let's work out those tweaks and figure out what we can do. And I think to Larry's point in the short-term rental community, I think there absolutely should be some discussion on what other things could apply and how else could we potentially either use this bucket of funding? Or maybe we change the grant up. Maybe we do a lot of great things and we realize the application period's up. There's a lot of flexibility, I think, is the point of this. And we can constantly evolve and adapt and add to, you know, add different programs to this in many different ways. And I think we can get really creative. This was just foundational for us to really get, you know, one of council's kind of initiatives on small businesses, local small businesses, to, to work towards, you know, something that we've been trying to do for a while.
Any questions for Steph?
Well, how do we plan to market this opportunity to the business?
Yes. And so since our last conversation, I spoke, utility billing is going to help me, we're going to put a little postcard that is mailed out to them. And then also the chamber said that they would help me to send it out, so they have a list of the businesses that are within the TERS, and so they'll send it out to their membership. And then I plan to try to get out on various media. I'm actually hoping that it passes because I'm supposed to be on media next week to, hoping to discuss that this is an opportunity.
I have a question about the TERS zone in and of itself. It was, or is, at this point, about 440 acres? Are you planning on reducing that size?
No, there were no plans in the 2050 plan to reduce the TERS.
Okay.
Any questions to Steph? Larry, you want more word?
Larry Howard again, 503 Oakland Hills. And I agree with Mr. Hornis and Mr. Dalton in the conversation, I was there at the TERS meeting when they talked about short-term rentals. The reason they're not classified as a business is because at that time, the zoning was different, and people were fighting over short-term rentals. So all the properties in the TERS are zoned commercial now. So there's not a zoning issue to be a problem here. That taxing a property, the increased value of my properties in a zone and not allowing those properties be eligible for funds is not right. I think y'all can all answer that question. I have no intention of applying for an improvement grant. I just think fundamentally, if you're going to collect tax on every property in the zone, every property needs to be eligible for the grant. Thank you.
I agree with that.
I agree with that. Plus, it improves the look of what area you're referring to.
The entire zone.
Wanted in the first place, so.
Brenda and I were on the council at that time. We, we suffered through months and months of short-term rental discussions. Brenda and I were on the council at that time. We we suffered through months and months of short-term rental discussions.
I can see at the time.
I did later at home after those meetings, too.
I would imagine you did. All right, we have discussed a bit. What else do you need from us right now?
No, and to to Mr. Howard's point, I have had some conversations with various business owners that are in the TERS area. And they have asked me about like about specific projects. And so I am seeing a theme that is not necessarily facade-related. And so I'm hoping that this can be a first step in being very successful. And then potentially we can grow because I know TERS does have a decent fund right now that we we could potentially do another grant that might be specifically for short-term rentals or these other projects that would help beautify the the TERS area.
Well, that's why I brought up the sidewalks because there are residences within the TERS. Now, they're not going to qualify for facade grant money in this initial project. But at some point, I think that they would benefit because, as Mr. Howard said, everybody who is in that TERS has paid into that fund. So maybe the the a project of of putting, you know, sidewalks in that area and making it, you know, more curb appealing that way would make them feel a little bit better about where their money's going.
Yes, and sidewalks was one thing that that had come up. So I was hoping to also go to TERS if the with this being successful and potentially asking if we can expand or have various grants because a lot of cities have have various grants that that are ongoing. So maybe it's a facade grant, a sidewalk grant, a parking lot grant, like they have multiples that that are available.
Mr. Hornus?
I was just going to say sidewalks are a part of the public infrastructure. And so that's a listed project in and of itself within the TERS. So, you know, I think what Kelly's pushing here is kind of more the economic development grant opportunity side. But sidewalk infrastructure as a use of those funds is just per I mean, it's it's like a permitted use, right, entirely? So, you know, the general fund, we have sidewalk dollars that we try to allocate correctly. But within the TERS, if that's something that the council would like to see, something we can bring back up to the TERS Board to do sidewalk projects within the TERS, we certainly can. Independent of this grant project, sorry.
So I have a question about so the TERS is a tax increment, right? And it's it's the increment that gets put into the fund. So other properties that are in there, they are not necessarily contributing to the TERS. As you unless the increase to I mean, so what's the baseline? Is it the new properties?
So the baseline is the twenty eighteen value.
For the whole for the whole.
The whole thing. So if it was a vacant piece of dirt, that piece of dirt, if it had a hundred thousand dollar value, it's everything above that hundred thousand.
Okay, so all right. So everybody's increases. It's not just some projects or something.
Only one that would have changed is Shriner One because that was a private building and then it was sold to a a public entity. So that one went off. That was that's it.
Okay, yeah, we'll just kind of get back in my head. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments? We're going to talk about this again in the meeting. Someone decides to pull it from the consent agenda. Let's go on to two B then. Who wants to start us off? Mr. Hornus?
Yes, sir. Well, y'all have seen my presentations. But really, the big meat of mine has always been kind of that number, right? As far as the debris removal, what I can tell y'all that we told the EIC last week was that that number is is reducing. So the daily haul from the debris contractors is is getting a lot less, which means what? Means they've collected most of the debris at this point. So we're at now about one, just shy of one point eight million cubic yards of debris. So I think they said it was going to be anywhere between one point five and two point five million cubic yards at the beginning. And they weren't they weren't far off. So I think it's it's been an interesting process with both contractors. Series was the contractor who is still working in the city. But primarily just in the city and and west to Center Point and Comfort. And then Ashbrit, they've been doing a good job. They're responsive to folks when they've had issues. We've brought stuff up that have come from y'all or we've heard from residents. And they've been they've been quick about their turnaround time and and making sure that they're not they're being mindful of of everybody's feelings and situations that they inadvertently created. So we thank them for that. So what's going to happen now for us? We are working with TDM to get them plans for the five thirty-four soccer fields. Because just about everything that was underneath all that debris has been destroyed. So the biggest, not the biggest expense, but one of them is the irrigation system that's set up for the soccer fields. Will have to get redone. They've committed to and have in our contract that they would restore those fields to the condition they were in before. We're not at that point yet, but we want to stay as far ahead as we can. So we'll get the plans for the irrigation systems, give them the type of base material that we'd like to see, the type of grass seed that we'd like to see for the soccer field. So we're hoping to have that to them by the end of this week. And we'll have a plan we'll bring back to y'all at the next council meeting, hopefully. And that's going to be a project that is done by the debris contractors. Talked to them extensively about it. They've done this in a lot of places throughout the country, restoring football fields, soccer fields. Football fields and soccer fields are apparently the place to go do a lot of this debris holding. Let's see, top of the mind for a lot of folks, I think, is Bear Creek. So we've had a lot of communication with FEMA today. We got our application that was reviewed by so it's interesting. It was reviewed by FEMA's staff that's been working with us. And they said, okay, we think this is what we need. Sign off on this and then we'll submit it to FEMA for review. And I'm like, but you're the review. You are the review. And she was like, no, I'm not the reviewer. I'm just the one helping you put the application in. So a lot of a lot of pieces and parts. But if everything goes our way, we should have work beginning. I really, really hope by November third. Maybe a little bit delayed because something's wrong in the paperwork, a typo here, something here. But I think everybody's being really responsive in terms of turning that back around. So next week is what I can commit to. I don't want to say the third is the day. And then the estimate is that it should take about six weeks to get it done. So before Christmas, and that's the temporary bridge. We have a full bridge project that's a separate deal. We're working with TDM and FEMA to figure out how we can keep the road open, at least one lane of traffic while we work on it. Because it's going to take probably six to nine months to do a full project. So I don't want us to open it up just to close it back down. But if you've been down there, we all have, it's a pretty narrow strip. And and the requirements are that we stay in that strip. We're not allowed to deviate and kind of go outside of it. So we're we're still working through those conversations with them. But the good news is is that temporary project is is on its way. Let's see, what else?
Why can't we deviate? Why can't we make it bigger?
So part of the deviation creates a whole it creates a whole host of permit requirements to a government that is not functioning right now, first of all, right? There's nobody there to answer the phone for some of this. And some of the timelines were in the hundred and thirty to hundred and fifty day permit review. And while we know we're important, I think there's a lot of stuff sitting on somebody's table. So I don't know that we would get it faster than that. So I think it just it creates a lot of complications for us to go outside of that area. We are talking to them about it, but I don't reading the tea leaves. That doesn't look like it's a very hospitable environment to try and do that. Yeah. That's a good question. I mean, if I if it was, you know, up to me or Jay, we'd figure it out. But then Tara would yell at us. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that that it's done efficiently. But but keeps that that transportation open throughout. I think that's going to make the project a little bit more expensive because they're going to have to flaggers. They're going to be able to only work on one section, one side of the road at a time. I would imagine it's like eight sections, right? So you got, you know, four blocks, but you're going to use one section, do that, the other section could be open. So, yes, it'll be an interesting project. Jay will be back with you guys next month to talk about Louise Hayes reimagining. We're still tracking down dollars and cents on all that and collecting ideas. We have put a survey out to the community and we've had at least six hundred responses so far.
Good.
And so we'll have more than that by the time we get to y'all. River Trail, nature, you know, keeping it nice and scenic is top of the mind for everybody. All the all the things that you would imagine are the top of the list are the top of the list, right? Restoring the tree canopy, bringing the splash pad back.
Are you going to be able to get those trees in November or December or January on the award?
From the Trees for Texas, folks, I.
It's up to him, but.
It's up to them, yeah.
Yeah.
We can I can we can surely accommodate it. But I think, yeah, it's a logistics thing. Can they do it?
Those were the months he thought we had to do it.
Yeah, it's a good time for planting.
Hold them and wait them, wait.
Yeah. The Riparian Restoration Group has been got they've received a grant from Community Foundation for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start planting seeds and the time to plant is now. So between, what, November and February? And I'm not sure if that's exactly the same for the trees, but that tracks. So if he's ready, we will make sure that we are ready.
I'll check. I I know we got an email from him this week, but I I was a little busy. So I was a blur as far as what he said.
Guadalupe Park, we're working with we put in an application with the Community Foundation in partnership with the NBA, some of the NBA teams. And so we're hopeful that that's going to materialize. And so we'll get new playground equipment out at Guadalupe Park. And then I think the plan was to put some pickleball courts out there and take away the the volleyball courts. Those are the volleyball courts that don't get used. We have heard from the community that the volleyball courts and Louise Hayes get used all the time. Don't do anything with those. The River Trail, everything's open minus Dieter to Lemos. And then if you're going past Camp Meeting Creek, you have to stop and turn around because there is no bridge. So we're work we're still working through those projects. No timeline yet. We should have something better for you next month on that. And good news, we met with Tara and her team today. And press release went out today that November fifteenth, we're going to be doing a cleanup on the River Trail from Francisco Lemos down to KSP. Well, so that's going to be the interesting thing. That's what we talked about, right? So we're tracking those volunteers because that'll be a part of our FEMA contribution, right? Those those hours apply. We talked about there might be two hundred people that decide to fly into Kerrville just to help out, let alone. I mean, I have no idea how many people would want to show up, but I imagine it's a large number. So we're trying to manage that, but I think there's going to be some I'm not going to stop anybody who comes in with a bag and a picker and decides they want to come help and it's open to the public, so.
Sign up.
But we we had to we have to manage some of that.
I know how you feel.
We got to have the waiters, waivers, the right amount of supplies, all that stuff. So we'll run out of those things.
Put me to work.
Do you sign up online?
Yes. Yeah, you want to?
Release today.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
Tara Bush, New York River Authority. Yes, in the press release that Stuart sent out today, it has a link to EGRA's website that we created for this project. And there's a link to a Google form from there that you can, just a quick registration form. We are designating six areas that you can sign up for. And there are kind of volunteer number caps on each of those that we'll be monitoring. So take a look at the map. If there's a group through your family or church or school or your business that you want to have a group of ten people, you'll have to sign up individually. But you pick a pick a spot, sign up, and then we'll have team leaders for each of those locations.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And then as far as the lakes go, I don't have any updates for Ingram Lake. Other than I know they've been out there dredging, right? And then if, you know, if they decide they're going to come down and continue to do that operation at Nimitz, they would first have to build a pad similar to what they would do, what they did at Ingram. And that would be there's some space adjacent to the water treatment plant, a little west and of it where they would likely do that. We talked about that a while ago. If they had to stage somewhere, it would be over there. So as updates come, we'll we'll bring those to you, but nothing nothing big on an update front from that.
That's just TDM doing that.
Yes, sir. That's right. Texas Task Force One is is leading that effort right there. Okay, so what's been on the screen is nothing that I've talked about. But I wanted to introduce Clinton Carter. Clinton is from the Bandera County River Authority and Groundwater District. So he's got both districts. Clinton has been a part of the Riparian Restoration Group. That is one of those subgroups of the Long-Term Recovery Committee. And he put this presentation together about the vegetation loss throughout the watershed. And so we thought it was appropriate for y'all to get a chance to to see that as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Clint.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hornus. Good afternoon. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to showcase some of this research and some of this GIS work that's been performed to assist with river restoration planning. I also want to mention I do work for the neighboring River Authority at Bandera. But I'm I'm a Kerrville resident. I was born and raised here. And it's amazing to see everyone that's come together. There's so many folks in the River Recovery Working Group. And it's there's a lot of of really good collaborations and contributions. So this is just one of them. This is going to showcase some tools that's been developed. This is hot off the press, so I'm excited to show it with you. So we're looking at two main outputs from the geospatial work. This is just the beginning, but this is where it's where it sits right now. One is the vegetation loss analysis, which quantifies vegetation impacts from our flood event. And then two is the restoration priority index, and we'll talk about what that means. So the vegetation loss analysis, this is targeted for riparian areas. The study area was actually clipped to the regulatory floodway. This is crucial for providing foundational data for restorational planning, for monitoring, for researchers, practitioners, decision-makers. And there's really just two components to the vegetation loss analysis. And that's going to be your high-resolution pre-flood and post-flood imageries. But before we dive into the nuts and bolts of the analysis, I would like to show just a a couple series of pretty impactful overlays. So what we're looking at here, Ingram Lake Ingram Lake Dam. And we're we're what it's showing is mature canopy, dense riparian forest. This imagery was captured in July of two thousand twenty-two. So this is what we used for our comparison, and this is what we're comparing the loss to. So in just a second, I'm going to click and we're going to see some of the environmental damage associated with the twenty fifteen or the excuse me, the July fourth, twenty twenty-five flood. It doesn't get easier to look at. I've seen this many times. And this is a wonderful, unfortunately, powerful representation of what we experienced on July fourth. So again, here's a Nimitz Dam. We're looking at a dense riparian canopy, robust riparian vegetation, July twenty twenty-two, and then July twenty twenty-five. Shriner University riparian area. This is by the trailhead Beer Garden. Major, major impact, catastrophic. So finally, we're looking at the South Fort Guadalupe. This is a skinny stretch there. And we're looking at nearly one hundred percent canopy cover over the stream prior to the flood. So the vegetation loss analysis uses what we call a supervised classification model in GIS to precisely map individual features of pre- and post-flood vegetation conditions. So really, what we're doing is we're taking what we can see from the imagery files and generating polygons. and generating polygons based on similar pixel characteristics. So if you look on the map on the left, you can see how we're going to pull out the vegetation class and turning it, and turn it into geometric units. So with polygons, we can calculate geometric area. We do the same thing for the post-flood. And now we can see what's, what that vegetation cover looks like remaining. So with any research or any model outputs, I think it's very important to discuss what the limitations are. In this case, the flood loss analysis, or the vegetation loss analysis does not differentiate species composition. So trees, shrubs, grasses, it groups them all together. It also doesn't differentiate age class diversity, mature canopy trees versus one-year-old sedges. It's all going to be grouped together. So we take these outputs, these polygons from our pre-flood and post-flood vegetation classes and overlay them and derive the vegetation loss analysis. So everything in red is representing what was there before the flood. And the green polygons represent what still remains. So here's some examples from the output at various locations along the river corridor. We're back here at Ingram Lake Dam. Major, major devastation, we're looking at over 90% canopy loss here. This one's a little zoomed out, it's at a scale of 1 to 7,000, this is Louise Hayes Park. Very extensive riparian loss, especially downstream of our impoundments in our small dams. Here's Lyons Park in Center Point. It's a lot of red. So we, we have all of this data, and when we zoom out, we're looking at 30 miles from the South Fork in Hunt, all the way down the main stem to the county line in Comfort. When we apply the analysis to this study reach, which, which again is clipped to the regulatory floodway, we're looking at an estimated 52% loss of riparian vegetation, which is equal to about 120 acres removed from the flood. So this is where the research becomes novel. We have the outputs from the vegetation loss analysis, and we take that and overlay it with the Kerr County CAD parcels. That's where we derive the restoration priority index. So the restoration priority index takes all of the relative and absolute vegetation loss and uses a variety of statistical metrics to derive a composite score per parcel at the ownership level. The results are categorized into four classes from low, medium, high, and very high. And we've also identified all public land parcels, including City of Ingram, City of Kerrville, and Kerr County. And then also identified parcels with no ownership information according to the Central Appraisal District. So speaking about the metrics that we use to derive this composite score, this ranking system, we're looking at property size, which favors large, you know, larger parcels that are large enough to have meaningful restoration work. But I want to say that very carefully, because whether you have 100 acres of riparian land or you have a tenth of an acre, all of it is relevant and all of it is significant. But when you zoom out and you're looking at 30 miles of riverine habitat, where do you even begin? So in this case, the larger sized parcels are going to be scored higher on the ranking system. But it's also combined with relative and absolute vegetation loss. So percent vegetation loss is important for capturing proportional severity of loss relative to pre-flood conditions. But also the absolute loss or the total loss measures that absolute direct ecological impact. The scoring is reduced by proper. So when we compile all of this data, there's 37 different ways that we can analyze data. This is just one of the outputs, we're looking at total acres within that 30-mile reach. According to the priority index, out of nearly 1,000 acres, 126 of those have been identified as very high priority for restoration, 203 identified for high priority. But I also want to make a note about the 529 acres that have been identified as low priority. It does not mean that those parcels or those acreage, or that acreage is a low priority or not ecologically significant for restoration. It just means in this context, looking from a, a large-scale planning perspective, we have other parcels that we should target first before we move on down to the, to the rest of the impacted properties. So we take all of this data, vegetation loss analysis, the restoration priority index, the high-resolution pre and post-flood imagery, and we put it into an interactive, user-friendly dashboard, and this is what that's showing here. You can click on any one of those parcels, it brings up ownership information, just like you would for the Central Appraisal District. But it also includes the property acres, which is clipped to the floodway. Total vegetation loss, vegetation remaining, and also proportional vegetation loss. On the top right, it's equipped with a dropdown menu where you can filter the different priority groups, low, medium, high, and very high. And then you can toggle the layers to switch between the restoration priority index that we're looking at now or just look at the vegetation loss, those red and, and green polygons. Or get all of that off this, off the map and just click between the pre and post-flood imagery, similar to what we saw earlier in the presentation with those overlays. So in conclusion, these tools provide a comprehensive framework to other disturbance events such as hurricanes, fires, tornadoes, future flooding events. The vegetation loss, once again, it establishes baseline conditions by quantifying those vegetation loss impacts. And it's further integrated into the restoration priority index, which can help guide practical outreach and restoration planning. This research is data-driven, scalable, and actionable. I have some printouts, I believe you all have some printouts up there. It provides a summary of the research as well as some instructions on the back looking at this dashboard, and it has a QR code on the bottom that you can scan, and it'll give you access to the, to the map that I'm talking about here. And I also put a QR code up here if you want to access the map. There's my contact information, and once again, thank you so much, glad to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions for Mr. Carter?
That was intense.
Gravel doesn't ever seem to come up, but I know just my own visual, looking at all the differences now that I see from where I can see them, a lot has been deposited differently from where it was before. I mean, is that going to impact? And, and the other thing is there's still standing water in some of these areas that wasn't collecting water before. Is there, is there a need to do anything about that or not? You just let Mother Nature?
Yeah, that's a great question. In my opinion, I think if you can leave it be, that would be the best thing to do. Because those newly formed depressions and wetlands are, are just the formation of new riparian wetlands. Everything's been rearranged, picked up, dropped off, and scoured out, and.
Maybe that's why I never heard of a plan for it, that's probably the best thing, you're right.
Thank you.
No questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item 2C, Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Todd Bach, Kerr EDC, here to give you an update on Kerr EDC and long-term recovery. As we spoke at the last meeting, this is our Board of Directors and just, this is a perfect example, Mr. Carter, and the type of quality that you have working in the long-term recovery group. This, this stuff continues to amaze me and our volunteers that have dedicated themselves and homegrown here to help. And it's just, it's just been amazing. This is, this is just a perfect example, and, and we have this type of talent all across the working groups. So I just wanted to say what a great segue into that, and, and thank you for your work and appreciate it. And to that, Long Term Recovery meets every Tuesday at 2:00. We just had our meeting and a follow-up meeting where all the directors get together and give an update on what the working groups are doing, and everybody is continually active, continually meeting, and continually producing the work, as you just saw here from Mr. Carter, across all the different working groups, from the Business Recovery, who has just recently submitted in to the Community Foundation on Monday, a grant to help business in their recovery and their rebuild on a materials proposal. And we're just waiting to hear back from the Community Foundation on that, should, should be soon. Hopefully this week we'll hear back. Got an update from the Housing Construction and Management. Both John Dunn and Mary Campana with Habitat, who are working on both ends of the county and in the middle, are starting some of their housing projects, going very well, and hope to continue to ramp those projects up as these, as the materials come online and as our warehouse comes online that we'll be using. With Jim, Global Empowerment Mission, we'll be running our warehouse containing all the supplies for those. Any questions about long-term recovery? Okay, moving on, these are the recovery working groups. These are the chairs of those groups that continue to run and organize throughout this recovery. All of these volunteers have stepped up, take a big role, and I'd like to say, I believe now our count, we are just above 200 volunteers amongst these working groups that we have, led by, led by these amazing leaders that we have in our community. Moving on to some active projects and business retention and expansion updates. Some of the active projects we have are Wingtips. This is a company that I believe I've spoke to earlier this year that we're looking at coming into the airport to provide charter air service. We've met with the airport manager, Kirk Griffin, and this project is, is being kind of monitored by Fredericksburg. Fredericksburg took an initiative to go out and has this service being offered, not directly through Wingtips, but on their own, and Wingtips is sort of guiding them and helping them through the process. So we're going to see and watch how, how successful Fredericksburg could be with it, and then look at potentially implementing this type of program within our community. Currently, the reason that we're not actively going out and seeking Wingtips is Wingtips would need a grant, a grant which the city or the county would have to apply for through the FAA, which would give operating money capital to get a project started. It's one of the most, most expensive, most expensive parts of bringing the air service into a community, obviously, is the startup costs. And that grant helps to do that. So currently, we're just kind of watching and seeing and looking as, as Fredericksburg Airport as a compass and a guide, and we'll revisit this at a later date. Still moving forward with a potential collegiate baseball team moving into Kerr County. Talks on that, we'll be visiting again this fall. The gentleman that is looking at bringing this league in is wanting to get together with a lot of our baseball families to see what kind of support that there is locally for, for a team coming into town. Very interesting concept, collegiate baseball is college baseball players that have not committed and cannot be paid. So this team would be housed in Kerrville, in which host families can be a part of hosting these athletes in their homes while they're here and in training. And I know they've been in talks with Shriner University about working collaboratively with their facilities there at Shriner. Greater SATX, this, the Greater SATX is the company that Kerr EDC contracts with to provide us the request for information for businesses that are looking to move within the San Antonio region. And these numbers just represent the number of RFIs, Request for Informations, by companies that come through SATX. We had nine in September, we had 14 in August, 12 in July, and six in June. Of those projects, we go through those projects, myself, Teresa, and Kelly, to look and try to identify some of these businesses that are moving into the San Antonio region, if there is a fit. We get very limited data, we get an idea about what the company does. They're all, well, this is Project Gummy Bear, everything is codenamed. So we will go through and look and go through these RFIs to see if there is a, if there is a company looking to either relocate or expand within the region. If, if their expansion, you know, meets our infrastructures or meets any of the criteria that we're looking for to diversify our industry portfolio, then we will have a look at those of these projects. Project Gummy Bear was a project that had some similar fits to our community. Capital investment of 40 million, job, they're, the, the jobs that they would create would be in food manufacturing. They needed five to six acres, 40,000 square feet, with the ability to expand to 100. And this was one of those leads that we sent a response to. Have not had a response back, I just checked when we got our update from Greater SATX. This project is in a, in a hold pattern where they are looking at and reviewing all of the different cities that put in sites. And then they will reach back out to us to see if you're a finalist before they come and view your, view your sites or, or view your community. And Kelly and Teresa attended the Greater SATX partnership meeting in person in New Braunfels. I know that that went very well, hearing from Kelly and Teresa, very well-recepted from Greater SATX and the region. Obviously, very supportive of us and our regrowth, potentially have some assets that we can look into to help us in our long-term recovery, that they would be willing to participate and help us out with. So great visit with them and great to be partnering with them. The business retention and expansion and startups. On the business retention and expansion, Long Term Recovery continues conversations and assistance with all of our businesses that were affected in and throughout Kerr County. Project Save is a local family looking to do some warehouse and potential distribution. They are in the health wearable and software space, very exciting. They are a family that is locally here in town. We're really engaged in this project, reached out to some other potential funders. They're, they're currently in fundraising mode. Some of their, their investors are also locally here in town, so this has been a very exciting project for us. Teresa's working with them too, to see where they qualify with some additional state funding and scaling of their business. So we've really enjoyed, really enjoyed working with the family. And again, it's a local family looking to, I wouldn't call them a startup, they have two portions of their business. One is a software, and then one is a wearable, a health wearable. Health wearable, without going into too many details, is like your Apple Watch or type of health monitoring systems that they have. So it's, it's basically two business models that work together or work separately. So again, So again, excited project and working with a local family here in town. Project Bobcat is a potentially local bootmaker looking for office space, warehouse distribution for product. And along with this meeting came another gentleman in town that has a business that, it was a single meeting, which turned into two prospects, looking for additional warehouse expansion and potential manufacturing warehousing. So we're working with them to identify space and logistics, especially on the bootmaking side. Logistics would be having the wares brought in, logistically getting them in and out to distribution in a timely manner. So another project that we're working on, and this week, I'll be visiting with a gentleman that has some warehousing space, plus looking at doing an RV park here in Kerrville. That follow-up, I believe, is going to be this Thursday.
On the floodway though, right?
No. No, it is not.
I assume not. I do have a question, though. So John Anderson used to do this in Miami, and believe it or not, he and I would go to lunch together a lot whenever he had a prospect who needed five to six acres or 40,000 square feet or whatever. So what do you do? Like, you're trying to answer the question of where should this company go? What resources do you use to help them determine where, if that can even happen, in a certain place? I'm sure zoning and all that comes into play, but you want to go to lunch?
Well, thank you for that question. You just teed up a challenge and an issue that we're looking to fix. We are, next month, within our budget, we are going to be activating EDO IQ, which is a CRM system for economic development. And this will allow us to take all of this information that I just spoke about, that is written on papers, in Google Sheets, in emails. It will be a CRM system that will be owned by Kerr EDC that regardless of who is at the controls, will have all of this information and data stored. Currently, we have filing cabinets, we have files, we have handwritten documents. All of this will be transferred into protective digital data that will be owned again by Kerr EDC. And then our next step is going to be looking into adding a module, and I believe Ms. Kelly is going here this next week to potentially meet with one of those compatible modules that is a property inventory management system, which takes all of our property, vacant, warehouse, leasing property, puts it all in a database, a database in which that we can then provide in the RFI or internally for use for ourselves as we have, we sit down, as we did today and we do with potential prospects, open up the website if they're looking at leasing, what is their budget, and all of that will be broken down into that property management. Right now, today, we go online, we drive around town, we call each other. I have an inbox with property inventory. Kelly sends me property, I send her property. Mr. Ed Hamilton is really good at keeping me updated of what is available in town, from warehouse to commercial space. Our realtors, we have great relationship with our realtors. I have realtors, as soon as they get a listing, they contact me, send it to me, I send it to Kelly, and that is currently how we are managing our property inventories.
I figured that's kind of what I did before.
Yeah, this is probably a dumb question, but are you searching for properties countywide or just citywide?
Countywide. So in that, that's where Kelly and I and our partnership that is working so well, regardless of who comes to me or comes to Kelly or who their first point of contact is, we work it. And then we're both involved. And then at some point in time, one or the other will take over that prospect or that, depending on location, if it's out in the county, I'll take the county, but I'll also take Kelly along for the ride, whether it be in emails, phone calls, or some potential meetings, because if that space doesn't work, then we immediately shift and try to find another location potentially within the city. So it's both. It is both. We go out into the county. ETJ, a lot. There's a lot within our ETJ, especially out in the industrial park area. There's a lot of that, there's some fine lines right within those industrial areas that is the ETJ. So Kerr EDC obviously is City of Kerrville and Kerr County, but specifically when we drill down within the city, Kelly will take the lead on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thought y'all were busy.
Indeed. We need to go into executive session for city attorney evaluation. Can I have a motion then?
I'll move. Go into executive session under 551.074.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor, so vote unanimously. We'll move upstairs.